Welcome to Lowell School Committee, May 1st, 2024. Salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living and justice for all. Matt Clark, please call the roll.
Mayor Ruck?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin? Six present, one absent.
Giselle is also here. Good to have you here tonight. Section 3, Special Order of Business 3.1, Spotlight on Excellence Science Engineering Fair. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and school committee members. I'm really grateful to have the opportunity to showcase our wonderful students and their work on the science fair. The impetus behind it was largely down to Dr. Rebecca Duda, so I'd like Dr. Duda to have an opportunity to introduce it for you. Is Dr. Duda with us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. As the coordinator of after-school programming, it's wonderful to work with our teachers and our students on their different activities. And one of the highlights of the year is the science fair that the middle school students participate in. They work diligently after school from the fall until, well, they were ready to go in February, but then we had a snow day, and they were very patient as it got delayed again. But ultimately, when we had our science fair at the end of March, they showcased a wide variety of different projects, coverings, all different types of topics in science and engineering, and it was really, really well done on behalf of everyone. So I'm very happy to be here and introduce our middle school folks from the Butler and the Pine, and then also from the high schools. So if we could have our middle school folks come up first, the Butler and the Pine? We have our coaches and our students. Come on up.
Thank you, school committee. Our first student is Lakota Whedon, grade 5 student from Butler Middle School. Her project was about how to extract DNA from a strawberry, and she learned a lot about the DNA molecule. Lakota's grade 5, so go ahead, say words. We appreciate the support from parents and the resources that we received from the school department. We show up at the Butler. Principal Moody helps us out a lot, and it was really fun, our team of participants from the Butler, to go to Lowell High School for middle school science fair, especially after, like Rebecca said, it did get delayed.
I'd like to thank the school committee for the science fair and having me here tonight.
Thank mom and the family. Thank you, mother and family. Thank you. You're welcome. That's all I'll say. That's good. You're good. Great job, Lakota. She'd also like to thank her parents.
Thank you all for having us. My name's Eric Colafraff, science teacher for 7th and 8th grade at the Pine. We have two winning teams this year. It's great that the art school gets to participate and show that we can still stem it out. So our second-place winner, Jordan, you want to introduce yourself and say what your project was about?
Hi, my name is Jordan Frera-Falberg, and my project was for the door lock dilemma. So you know when you have a door, but it doesn't always close all the way, and it's very annoying sometimes? Well, most companies have tried to design a system to detect that, and it fails by, so that it will detect that it's closed when it really doesn't, and it goes slightly but not all the way. And so I designed a system so that it will detect, 1, when the door has been open for way too long, 2, when it closes but not all the way, which is our biggest issue, and 3, when it's fully secure. And it will send an alarm so that, and it will connect to a different remote so that somebody can go down and close the door correctly.
Jordan worked on that project all by himself from concept. It's a problem with, at our school and other schools where the doors don't always shut, so it's not safe. So he solved that, found that problem and decided to solve that. So he did a great job. Our first-place winning team, I'll let these two students introduce themselves and tell you about their project.
So my name is Sam from 6th grade, the Pine nuts school, and my program was, my project was about a middle school locker that could have the door open and close it automatically, and then she did the design.
So I'm Naomi, also from the Pine. Oh, my bad. And to kind of elaborate, our school lockers were like a big problem because the doors were stuck and none of them really had enough room for like all of our stuff. So we tried to make a better design, like it had an outlet. It was super organized, and we built the entire locker. It was basically taller than me out of cardboard.
So they also had a problem in the school. I think they mentioned the lockers, that how tight they are. In 6th, I think 5th, 6th, and 7th grade, the students have to share a locker, so they wanted to create the perfect middle school locker with the right dimensions, built-in storage, mirrors. Like Naomi said, they put a charger station in there, you could charge your Chromebook. And Sam designed a remote control that could be stuck to your student ID, so it could actually unlock, lock, and open the locker for you if your hands were full. So very proud of our teams, and again, we appreciate you guys having us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to now introduce Patty Adams and the high school students. And Emily Steinberg, sorry.
Hi, everybody. Emily Steinberg, I am the STEM Club Advisor for grades 10 through 12 at the high school. And I have two of our three groups, two of my three groups, here with me tonight. They're going to come up and tell you about our projects, but I do want to mention that they were able to not only participate in the district fair that we had at the high school at the end of March, but they went on to the regional fair, which was actually the beginning of March, and then they participated in the state science fair, which was at Foxborough Stadium at the beginning of April. So it's a really great experience for the kids, and they can see what other high school students are doing, potentially get scholarships, and just, you know, really be able to take their experiments to the next level after sort of having that experience at both the regional and the state level. So I'm going to have them come up and introduce themselves and explain their projects.
Good evening, school committee. Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Nathan Julia.
And my name is Dashiell Hanson.
So on our project, we worked on an artificial pancreas with another group member who couldn't be here tonight. We developed a model for how an artificial pancreas might work using code, which could improve the livelihood of diabetes patients worldwide, with the help of our amazing mentors and the school committee, of course. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tavi. I'm currently a junior, and my project was, can milk paint replace oil paint? And for this project, I targeted the health impacts of milk paint and oil paint, which I found out that oil paint can cause poisoning, and it could lead to like a lot of symptoms that could potentially harm human and also environmental health. I also found a way to make the milk paint usable, and it has been shown that it could have really great quality when applied to like canvases or like walls. And it's really important because milk paint does not contain any harmful chemicals that could potentially like harm people or the environment, which I think is why I think that this project was important, because I had to research all these things. And I want to thank the school committee for having me and my other friends here, because without them, I wouldn't be able to research like now. Thank you.
Ms. Duda, anything else? Yeah, absolutely, yes. Come up, I'll choose.
This is my way to get out of the pictures. Yes.
Section 4 Minutes. Motion to approve the special and regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee on April 17th, 2024, placed on file by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Bahu. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.1, approval of the special/executive session meeting on August 17th, 2024. And 4.2, approval of the minutes regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting on April 17th, 2024. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 5, permission to enter, May 1st, 2024. Motion to approve the permission to enter by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call. Oh, Ms. Dougherty, go ahead. Does she want to say something?
I had a question about the, I'm sorry, I don't seem to have it right in front of me, so I'm just going to go by memory. There was an item, and I think it was like $43,000 for the Alice program. I'm wondering if we have done that before, because I know we had, my colleague had a motion about looking at outside consultants around security, and I'm just wondering if this is something we have typically done, or if you could just explain that expense. Well, thank you.
Superintendent?
Thanks for your question, Ms. Dougherty. Dr. Hall, can you give some details, please?
That was the annual fee that we're being charged for that, Ms. Dougherty, that was recommended after consultation with the police and our safety officer.
So just to make sure I understood you, so that is a fee we've encountered before, and it's under the advisement of the Lowell Police Department?
Yes, the safety officer spoke to the police department, and they mutually decided that that would be the best way to go forward, and that's the licensing fee.
Okay.
It's not an annual training per se, but it's periodic, and the type of training and the advice given evolves and changes from time to time, and so it's normal for the police department or some other safety organization to recommend retraining periodically.
Anything else? Roll call.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Section 6 motions. 6.1 by Mr. Rossi. Request the superintendent coordinate a meeting with community stakeholders to begin a respectful conversation regarding the overall concerns of equity within a school department, equity with facilities, education, professional development, how information is shared for employee opportunities, transportation, also recognizing. Research has solidified that we have understood students, students of color, low-income students, English-language learners, et cetera. Routinely receive follow-up instructions and higher-order thinking skills than other students. As a result, the curriculum tends to be repetitive and monotonous, which often causes students to lose focus and motivation. Seconded by Mr. Conway, Mr. Rossi.
Thank you. I bring this motion due to a lot of conversation that I've heard over the past week in regards to equity within the schools. There is many, there are many schools, many educations of our young students that are not equal in this city, as was pointed out last week. Not, also not equitable is our facilities, our professional development, how information is shared, or transportation. It's different day to day, and the way this information is shared is different each and every day. I also received a letter from a teacher at the Bartlett who was talking about, and I gave this to all of you, that the district not being equitable because of the facilities at the Bartlett, and how they had a big play there, but nobody could hear them, and they didn't have curtains for the play, and they were supposed to have money for it, but then they said they didn't have money for it. So where is all of this going, and how is this happening? And why isn't, why aren't we just being transparent all around when it comes to equity? And also, they had lost power two days before April school vacation. They went two days without power where students couldn't use the cafeteria, and there are students in wheelchairs. So there are equitable issues throughout this whole entire district, and when I think of the reason why I chose to run for school committee, it was because of equity within the district. There is no equity, whether it be the way you're treated as a staff, facilities, education for the students. And I know you said that, when you read this, you said, "Research has solidified that we have understood students," but no, research has solidified that we underserve students, students of color, low-income students, and English-language learners. That does need to be addressed. They leave, they do not get as high-quality, high-order thinking skills, so we have to look at curriculum. So I would just like to start a conversation with community stakeholders in order to help build transparency all around equity. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, and I think there's a lot of areas here that we could discuss around fairness, but I'd like to focus on the facilities piece, because this personally has been an ongoing issue for me. I had motions three and four years ago, when we had plenty of money, about windows, shades, lockers for the Bartlett School. And by the way, I'd like to ask that this letter be entered into the records. This teacher is stepping out very bravely to talk specifically about issues at that facility. So I think it has been a long time coming, and a lot of asking, and resubmitting motions, and what are the updates? What I'd like to suggest is we hold, I believe this is in line with your thinking, Mr. Del Rossi, that we hold a facility subcommittee meeting at the Bartlett School. We poll for when people are able to come. Invite the facility subcommittee from the city council, because as we know, we're partners in these buildings. And I mean, the lockers alone, just, I mean, I will never forget that 8th grade student who asked me, "Why does our school look like this? I've been to the other middle schools, and they don't look like this." And not that the other middle schools are perfect, we have facility challenges across the district, as many of the school facilities across the state do. It's not a unique problem to Lowell, but I think when we look at the needs at the Bartlett and some of the other schools, the Career Academy is another one that jumps out at me, and how long we have been trying, at least I personally, have been trying to see some change over there, when we had the money and it didn't happen. Are you amenable to saying that we start that stakeholder meeting by having a facility subcommittee at the Bartlett, and the focus initially would be on the facilities? That would be my recommendation.
I think that would be a good start, but I also think that that's a very cohesive start to this very big piece of equity.
Yeah, it's more than that, I recognize that.
Thank you.
But we need to start somewhere.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 6.2, Mr. Lay. Ask the superintendent to explore how other districts and mass, two states, are doing for removing MCAS tests as a graduation requirement, seconded by Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. MCAS has been...
We have a registered speaker, want to have that person go first?
Sure. Okay.
Chris Destine?
Good afternoon, members of the school committee. Thank you for having me. My name is Chris Destine, the student council president of the Stokolosa Middle School. I'm here to address the motion regarding the MCAS. After speaking with numerous students and educators of various grade levels, it's overwhelmingly clear that students and teachers alike feel that MCAS is taxing and tedious. Conversations about getting rid of the MCAS have been on for years. Tonight, I will read you firsthand testimonies from students and staff members regarding their feelings about the matter. Once, one 8th grader stated, "I feel like we should scrap the idea of passing..." I feel like we should scrap the idea, if you don't pass the 10th-grade MCAS, you don't pass high school at all. This is outlandish, this is an outlandish idea for many reasons. One of them being that some newcomers might be new to the MCAS, and they may not understand the vocabulary in the MCAS. They shouldn't be held back for not passing it. Also, if students don't pass the MCAS, the molecule could drop out, as the thought of redoing the MCAS over and over again seems embarrassing and stressful. Students, another student has, another student said, "I believe that high schools shouldn't have the requirement in place, because if students find out they didn't pass the MCAS, they don't, yeah, they didn't pass the MCAS, they don't get a diploma, which would cause them to stress out, and most likely will cause them to fail, which in turn is setting them up for failure." A former ML student commented, "I think we should get rid of the MCAS altogether, because, but a good start would be getting rid of the MCAS as a requirement for graduation." When I was in 4th grade and 5th grade, I failed because my English was so low. Now, as an older student, I felt anxiety around this test. As I enter high school, the thought of the 10th-grade MCAS is stressing me out. I want to go to college. I need a diploma for that. I'm nervous that the requirement could keep me from achieving my goal. One educator in particular stated, "We all talk a lot about equality and mental health in our district and education in general. However, the MCAS, however, the MCAS, as it exists, goes directly against all of the conversations, everything we are working towards making a positive impact on. Every year, students become more, very anxious about this test, and in certain grades, they take multiple tests in a short period of time. Furthermore, students have commented that it makes them feel like their teachers are teaching and preparing them for the test and not engaging in their academics, in academic manners, like preparing them for the real world. This puts stress on the teachers, who have had similar comments about feeling like they are forced to cram tests, they're forced to cram these tests. Overall, I don't feel as though this test proves anything other than students are good test takers, while other students aren't, and they are penalized for it. If students, if a student is engaged in class all year and passes their classes, it shouldn't come down to one or four tests to prove their abilities." I would like to put this in words for you guys, a single sentence to be exact. One told to me by Mr. Matthew Gillis at the Stokolosa Middle School. The MCAS is meant to put students in a box. It makes all fit into one normality, which is what, which is to do well on the MCAS. But not all students fit in that box. Some students learn differently than the norm. My team and I have run a, have ran a survey about the, about tests in general, saying, we asked them, we asked students all around Lowell, and one of the main problems was... we asked them, we asked students all around Lowell, and one of the main problems was tests like this causes them to stress out, and stress could lead to failure. This is just setting them up for failure. With all this in mind, I encourage you to make the right decision, and please, change the MCAS. As many students try their best, they don't make it that far. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that though MCAS is the statewide responsibility, however, it, it is important topic that educators and students alike here in the Lowell, some of them think that having MCAS tests are important. At the same time, some think that having it as a graduate, as a requirement to graduate from high school could be, could add extra stress to the students. Therefore, my motion is to ask the superintendent to explore with all the districts what they think, and whether this particular topic can be brought up to the state level for attention. Thank you.
All's in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes, six point three. Mr. Lay, ask the superintendent to provide a report or to update on the possibility of changing school start times. Seconded by Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lay.
Do we have a speaker also?
Grand clerk?
Kim Jeffboom.
Hi, school committee members, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Kim Jeff... Oh, sorry. Hi, school committee members, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Kim, and I'm an eighth-grade student at the Stockalosa Middle School, here to speak to you about one of the main issues that many adolescents face, school start time. According to the survey we conducted, students responded that many of their major concerns are centered around mental health. It was discussed that students starting so early hurt their physical and mental health. Yes, many students stay up late because they want to, but that's not the issue with every student. We surveyed the student in our district, and found that sixty-three point six percent of the student believes starting early, school early is an issue. We also found that eighty-five point nine percent of the students had always, often, or sometimes seen a student sleeping in class. We asked them if they ever felt tired during school, and ninety-three point four percent always, often, or sometimes felt tired during school. These numbers prove that kids in the Lowell district have a problem with lax sleep due to school schedules. Starting school later can also better engage a student more in class activities. Kids sometimes sit in class and just stare at the teacher. Students keep their head down in class because they lack the energy to sit up and pay attention. Some of my peers who come in late to school have commented that they are able to work harder on those days because they have more energy and don't feel the need to take a nap in the middle of school. There are some schools with later start times, such as Them, Wang, and Butler. This means there's inequity among our schools, when schooling should be equal for all students. Other districts have experimented with later start times and have great success. For instance, Beverly and Lexington. Lexington specifically is one of the top districts in the state of Massachusetts. Lexington High School starts school at eight-thirty a.m. and ends at three-ten p.m., while the middle school both starts at eight a.m. and end around two-fifty p.m. The test scores that come out of Lexington each year are always in the top percentile of the state. Starting school later in our district perhaps increase our students' test scores and make Lowell one of the top districts as well. Starting school later would benefit so many students in the district. Personally, I'm a highly honors student and have always worked very hard. The one problem I have is I feel very tired in school and feel the urge to sleep in class almost every day. I just happen to be one of the students who can do all my work and also take a quick nap right after, but that's not for every student. I have a friend who struggled with the work in class but is too tired to function. My friend always asks for help, but struggles with keeping information as he is too tired to function properly. He works hard and is trying his best, but he just can't work properly in school because he's tired. Me and my friend are two different people. When it comes to working, I feel things are unfair between the two of us, as I can work hard and be able to take a nap, but my friend can't finish his work as he works slower. Starting school later wouldn't just benefit me, it would benefit the students throughout the entire district when it comes to engagement and learning. The students would feel so much better during classes. More engaged students mean better test scores and overall better learning experience. More engaged students will yield more engaged citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good job, Kim, student from Stock, student from Stockalosa for doing research on, on, on this motion, and I really appreciate to hear that. So superintendent, this motion is, if you could have a report on this for... Thank you.
All's in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes, six point four. Mr. Lay, ask the superintendent to have a survey regarding the quality of school lunch and provide some recommendations to improve its qualities that include choices, taste, and freshness. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have our two registered speakers, Mr. Lay.
Should I go first?
It's up to you, it's your motion.
Okay, I'll go first. First of all, I want to thank students from Stockalosa for taking your time, and the teachers and staff for helping the students come up here and speak. But definitely, school lunch has always been a topic for improvement, improvement. All the time, everywhere you go, every school, you talk to the students, they always talk about wanting more fresh meat, fruits, and, and fresh milk, better lunch, better taste. So this motion is gonna, hopefully superintendent, we can have an answer for, for these students. Thank you.
Hi, school committee members, thank you for having me today, so I'm going to be talking about better school lunches. So, over this year, I've seen many students complain and talk about how school lunches are always bad, or like tasteless, or could be so much better. And I believe as a student, that we're, we're here to make the best of like our four years in middle school, and I think we should always have the ability to give like the best performance we can ever give. But I also think that if we don't have the energy to give this type of performance, it's going to have a bad record for the school. And all the students always have something to say about, about school lunches. It could be about the taste, the looks of it, the smell, or about anything about the school lunches. And I know that, um, school committee members, you want the best for us as students, so I believe that you should be able to hear from students and hear what they have to say about school lunches. Because my, I and my classmates, we did a research about how students don't have any say on their school lunches, or any parents have feedback on school lunches, and I believe that every student and every parent that attends a Lowell public school should have a say in their school lunches and have something to say about their school lunches. And I'm, I'm starting from a point of view of students. I know that as school committee members, you do not want to waste money, because there's a lot of things you want to do for the community. So I believe that when you're putting money on school lunches, why not just spend money once and actually see the value, you're not seeing students, students waste the food, and students not really appreciating the food. I know you're doing us a huge thing by giving us free school lunches, but it's, I feel like it's a disrespect for you putting money into something, but like, we can't eat it because of how bad it is, or how tasteless it is. So I believe that you should put money, it could be more money, but it's better outcome. It's less wastage, people actually consume it, and they actually take it in, and they actually appreciate your work as school committee members. And I also think it's a huge problem that as students, we want to talk to some school committee members, but we understand you're busy, but some, um, some of the school committee members, they don't reply our emails, and we can't, we have like a very, that's like a stock point for us, because if you don't reply our emails, we have no way to move forward. We don't hear from you, we have no way to set up a date or a meeting. But thanks to Mr. Lay, he actually replied us, and he actually helped us very much in these projects, and gave us some information. And from the research we did, we saw that so many students had something to say about school lunches. I personally, my, my classmates actually personally made a slideshow, but it's not here right now, and there are some pictures of it, and I'm still going to try to make the school committee members see it. There are some pictures on it, some things that has to say about how school lunches actually look, to how students actually may preserve it. Because I know that food is like a major thing for everyone, because I know as adults, you will know like to preserve something you don't want to eat, or something that's tasteless or looks bad. You also want something that's going to give your energy to be able to work hard in your school, I mean, in your office. And you will know also like your student, your, your children talking about how bad it is, or your children getting food poisoning, or getting sick, just because they had lunch. So I'm here talking, standing for, please can you help us check the school lunches and help us make it better? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Trinity. Our vendor, Aramark, is proven to be an untrustworthy vendor, seeing as how even prisons are complaining about the food that's provided. Aramark gives a menu to the cafeteria staffs, and those staffs aren't even able to choose or suggest anything else. When we talked to one of the lunch staffs, that she told us, Aramark sent a box of bananas, but when she opened the box, the bananas were rotten. A growing human body is supposed to get things that are healthy for the body, and Aramark isn't providing these necessities. Schools are meant to offer healthy foods for students, but because of these vendors, this healthy food isn't being eaten. And that's not only wasting, but it's also waste, it's not only wasting food, but it's also wasting money. All this wasted money can go into getting a new vendor. There are most definitely other vendors that can provide what schools need. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say congratulations to all the students who spoke tonight, the science projects, the advocacy you're doing for your, around your schools, it's so impressive. It really makes me quite proud to be part of the school district. But I do want to ask through you to the superintendent, I know it has been an ongoing issue about lunch, but I thought we had set up, Ms. Martin had a motion a while ago, where there was a place on the website where you could register complaints, put photos, and so I want to just make sure that's still in place. And then my second question through you to the superintendent, this committee, well, maybe not the new members, but prior committees, we made a decision that we wanted to purchase the top-tier level of food, and I thought that's what we were doing, because we are given a bucket of money, and whatever we don't spend, we're able to use for other things related to food. But we, one of the choices we had was saying, we want to get the highest quality food, not the lowest, not the, even the middle. And so I, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, but those would be my two questions for you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, and thank you for your questions, Ms. Doherty. As Dr. Hall oversees the food service, I think he may be able to provide you more detailed information. Dr. Hall?
Ms. Doherty, there still is a reporting system that's available, where you can upload complaints or comments as directed by the school committee, and I believe we're still at the top tier. You're correct, the school committee directed that several years ago, but I'll investigate that to see if there is an option, and I think the students did a great job presenting. I'd also like to suggest that Congress sets many of these nutritional guidelines that limits what can and can't be served, to have nutritional balance, so I would suggest letters get sent to Congress as well, although a great job was done tonight in presenting to the committee.
If I could follow up? So maybe we could have some sort of report that explains, we still have the feedback system, what is it? Is every school aware of it, you know, and if we are still purchasing high-tier foods, we should not be purchasing meat that's not meat, bananas that are rotten, things, I mean, I know we have health guidelines that we have to follow, but those health guidelines around low salt, low sugar, real nutritional value, it's not around quality of the food. So I'd be looking, look forward to some kind of a update that explains for people, if you do have an issue with the food, how can you let us know about it?
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the superintendent. Before we had the meeting tonight, you came around to all of us and asked what we'd like for lunch. Well, I would assume most of us haven't gone into the schools to have lunch. Why don't you see if you can get the same type of lunches for us on, on Saturday, so that we see firsthand what they're talking about?
I think it's an excellent idea, be happy to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
Firstly, and most importantly, thank you to all the speakers that spoke tonight, because you do, we're here for you, and you make us proud to know that our education is bringing you up, what we're offering here is bringing you up to our microphone and allowing you to feel like you're a part of government, and that you're a part of the civics process, so that we can go ahead and make the best decisions for you. So thank you to every one of our speakers, we're, we're very proud of you. Secondly, about school lunches, as a matter of fact, just, just our last meeting, we had Aramark come here with Mill City Grows and describe everything, what they do to go ahead and create the very best school lunches possible for us. And I know that I was a student in Lowell Public Schools, and some of those lunches didn't taste very well. I also know that I was a member of the high school, and it was three thousand five hundred students there, and they were cooking for three thousand five hundred students, as far as I know. We're making fifteen thousand lunches per day, because that's how many students we have. We're also making breakfast as well. And Aramark is doing their very best, and I know we have to follow the, the guidelines of what the nutrition experts say over in the federal government. So yes, and, and, and I'll talk about inauguration day. As a matter of fact, we were invited up to lunch on inauguration day, and we went upstairs to central office, and we shared food, and I said, "Oh, my, this food's really, really very good, Mr. Superintendent, is this special for us? Did you have it catered?" And, you know, and I said, "Could you get back to me on that?" And you shared with me, "No, this is, this is the school lunches that we offer right here within our school district." So, yet, I, I just want to share that school lunches can sort of be bland at times, based on salt, and not enough sugar, and not enough pizza, but I do know that Aramark is doing their very best. I know they supply food for, across the country, and they do do their due diligence. However, I'm sure we can look into it and see what could be the best offerings for all of our students.
Just so.
So this topic actually hits really home for me, because I haven't ate in school lunch since kindergarten. My peers who know me since kindergarten has always called me the Chicken Nugget Girl, because I would bring home lunch, chicken nuggets, every day. And high school food is much better than middle school food, but still, I don't, I don't like it. So I think it's important that you said that you got the food from somewhere, it's the school district food. I think it's important that on Saturday, you don't tell them that this food is for the school committee, so you can get a real taste of what we have to eat every day. And yeah, I just want to say congra, like, I could not have said it better myself, you are so, I look up to you so much, and that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All's in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Lay?
Mr. Mayor, would that be okay if we move this discussion to the subcommittee as well? Appropriate subcommittee?
You want me to report to come back for us before you do that?
Right.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I also ask you to suspend the rule?
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Lay? Seconded by Ms. Doherty, Mr. Lay?
Just my, my fault that we have a speaker here to speak on financial literacy, and I failed to put that motion in, and...
What's the motion, Mr. Lay?
The motion is to explore the feasibility study, feasibility, feasibility study of having financial literacy in middle school.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Bahu? You heard the speaker, Mr. Lay? Does the clerk have it?
There should be a speaker here.
I don't have it.
Just state your name and what school.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, school committee. I'm Emma Link, and I'm a student at the Stockalosa Middle School. I'm going to be speaking about financial literacy classes being implemented into the Lowell public school curriculum. As my class's final civics project started, we built consensus around Lowell's major issues. We have chosen homelessness as a major topic. The root cause we have chosen is how people don't have any prior knowledge of money or finances. Due to this, we found a solution. Said solution is implementing financial literacy classes into the Lowell public school curriculum. We know this will take time and effort, along with hard work and perseverance, but if we show you guys that it can be done, it will. It won't stop homelessness, but it can lessen the amount of homeless people in Lowell. Through many... many surveys and research, we found that more than 80% of Lowell Public School students think that this, this class will be beneficial to them. Personally, I have spoken to greater Lowell Technical School students, and they have the finance literacy class. They think that these classes are important as they grow, get jobs, and get more money. Our thought process is piloting and implementing it first at the Stockloso Middle School. It will, it will be helpful to Lowell's reputation as a whole. It will give us a positive and better outlook. It will also make leaders and stronger thinkers in the city of Lowell. It take, it's, it took courage to come up here and talk, and I care about my peers and the future generations of middle school and high school students. So I came here to talk about financial literacy classes. Thank you for taking the time to listen and consider.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lay? Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want for clarity, Mr. Lay, please, that I wrote the wording of your motion as you're asking for the superintendent to explore the feasibility of including financial literacy in the middle school curriculum. Does I have that right?
In, in middle school.
Yes. In middle school, yeah.
And then if I may, on the previous motion regarding the school lunches, it seemed for a moment that you were suggesting we go to the subcommittee. Is that how you want that motion to be addressed?
After the report was decked, Mr. Superintendent?
After the report is issued. Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Doherty?
If I remember correctly, we've had a couple of motions on financial literacy, and Ms. Thompson last year did get a financial wellness curriculum in the district last year, and it will be rolled out shortly. There's also legislation in that I had Rodney Elliott come and speak on, so it could go in for kindergarten through grade 12, so it would be extended. So maybe if we can just get an update on where it is in the process of being rolled out at the time, that would be helpful also, instead of kicking it around to another subcommittee again, and again, and again.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Special thank you to the staff, parents, and students of the Stockloso School. You represented your school very good tonight, so thank you very much. If you want to leave now, you can, but you're welcome to stick around for the next probably three hours, so. Thanks, thank you very much. Section 7, Subcommittee 7.1, Finance Subcommittee Report of the Meeting of Thursday, April 25th, 2024. Chairman Bahu?
We had a Finance Subcommittee this past Thursday, April 25th, at the Central Administration Office Building on the fifth floor. It was televised. If you'd like to watch it on LTC, I'm sure it is still available for us. But anyway, we had Subcommittee members present, who were myself, Mr. Conway, and Ms. Martin, and also some school committee members were present as well, which were Ms. Del Rossi and Mr. Lay. From the school department, Mr. Skinner attended the meeting as well. And the topic of the meeting was to discuss the Abrams Report, which was an audit of our finance department. And the Abrams Report discussed five major topics, which were payroll, budget, purchasing, invoicing, and end-of-year reporting. We discussed, to the best of our knowledge, on how we would address that through the auditing guidelines of what the Abrams Report had to offer to us. So Mr. Skinner shared that, you know, that would be a, a tool that we would work with. It would be a progress in motion, because we are currently in the time of interviewing for a new business manager. So our new business manager would be guided to implement a lot of the programs, I'm sorry, a lot of the guidance that we were recommended to by the Abrams Report. Superintendent Skinner stated in the past, the budget was developed at central office, and schools were treated the same. He stated, under the past superintendent district, went to fair student funding, which allows for difference among schools. He stated that schools make their own decision, but with guardrails. Ms. Martin stated that she believes that we need to like, to take a look at all of our fiscal policies. Superintendent Skinner stated that with the new finance person is hired, they will be tasked with, tasked with looking at all the recommendations, and will be asked to advise and inform the committee what is and isn't, is in place. He stated that it may take time. So we are, we do understand what we need to do, and we are progressing towards having the best business office within our, that we can. Secondly, during our meeting, we spoke about the Crest Collaborative. They asked to increase their capital funding from $600,000 to $2 million. We did discuss it at length. What we came up with at the end was Crest would be funding their own capital expense, so that would not be on us. With that being the case, we did take a vote. Ms. Martin made a motion to take a vote to see if we wanted to pass that recommendation from Crest Collaborative, and it came out unanimous. So we went ahead and agreed to what Crest would like us to do. And that's the end of my report.
So Mr. Bahu, would you prefer to have the motion come before the full party tonight?
Sure, yes.
By Mr. Bahu, second by Mr. Conway. That's a motion to approve Crest moving to $2 million cap. By Mr. Bahu, second by Mr. Conway. Comments? Roll call.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
With that being said, now the motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Doherty, second by Ms. Doherty. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 8, reports to the superintendent.
Yes, I would like to ask that we suspend the rules and move item 8.2, I'm sorry, 8.3 up. I just became aware, we have students who want to speak on this report from middle-
Motion by Ms. Doherty to take 8.3 out of order, second by Ms. Martin. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Response to motion by Ms. Doherty, April 7th, 2024, regarding health curriculum. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I, I'm aware there are students signed up, so I'd like to let them go first.
Madam Clerk?
Miranda Hing.
Good evening, school committee members, Mayor Rourke, and Superintendent Skinner. My name is Miranda Hing, and I'm an eighth grader at the Daily Middle School. I have read the report requested by Jackie Doherty, and I'm pleased that the request for a survey of middle school students input, input on the new health curriculum is approved. The survey should include questions that address student interest and the need to learn about topics such as consent, types of con, types of contraception, sorry, how to use contraception in teen pregnancy, gender identity, child trafficking, warning signs, and more. There should be opportunities for students to rank the level of important of topics on a sliding scale of one to 10. There can also be checkboxes where they can check off topics that are important for them to learn and ones that are less important. There can also be a checkbox section for students to select which topics they have studied, so it is clear what students have learned this year. Maybe there can also be a comment section for students to share their input. It is, it is also important that the survey includes questions such as if they believe that the health curriculum should have some changes, and if yes, what topics, topics have they previously learned in their health curriculum? And if they feel that there are missing topics that need to be covered, so that there can be an idea of what's already covered and what's not. I think the survey should be given to students in grade seven and eight in middle schools, because they have a gist of what they have already learned in their health curriculum for the past three to four years at their school. The benefits of this survey is that the development of health curriculum can be improved by using students from Lowell Public Schools' input from what they know would be good for the health curriculum as students themselves. Please consider these ideas as the survey is developed. Thank you.
Good afternoon. It's so great to be here again, and I can't wait to bother you guys again. But good evening, school committee members, Mayor Rourke, and Superintendent Skinner. My name is Derek Hing, and I'm in eighth grade here at the Daily Middle School. I would just like to say that I really liked everyone else's speeches. I can personally say that today I had cheese wrapped in her tortillas, so I hope you guys can do something about that. But in considering what the student input will look like, I think that not only should there be student input from the middle schools, but also high schools. I think there should also be a minimum of at least two students from each school to be invited to the task force. When looking for student leaders to have input on this task force, students that represent different communities would be best. Students that follow religion such as Buddhism, Hinduism, or Christianity, people of color such as Asians, Black, Latinx, and mixed students. Not only that, but those presenting with different gender identities and sexualities should also be considered. In a time where students are learning, growing, and I don't know, just in school, we should be given a platform, and we should be listened to, and I hope that happens. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again, and have a good night.
Good evening, school committee members, Mayor Rourke, and Superintendent Skinner. My name is Gabriela, and I am an eighth grader at the Daily Middle School. After reading the report in response to Jackie Doherty's request, I am excited about the creation of a student survey, so our voices can be heard. I think it's important that you include students in the development of the survey. It would be a good idea for us to help create the questions, because as students, we know what is wanted, and we know what is needed to improve our education. Our voice is important, since we know what other students are looking forward to when it comes to learning. Thank you for listening, and have a good night.
Ms. Doherty? Thank you, Honored, and thank you for this report. I think it's a good start. I guess in response to my motion, there was one piece that I was really looking for that wasn't in the report, and that was how much time on health are we actually getting in the middle schools? I know it was mentioned that it's in the allied arts block. Is that the same for every school? Is it only six weeks? I, I'd like more information on that. And I, I think we should get a follow-up report, because as many of the students mentioned, they've got some ideas about getting involved in the development of the student survey, and also who's going to be surveyed, and then who, how are we going to add student representation to the health task force? Those would be some questions that I think should be explored and revisited with the school committee. The other thing I noticed about the report, I know this was kind of, we didn't have anything about sex trafficking, and, and I know this might come later. Ms. Desmond, when you have more of a sense of the, the years played out with the curriculum, because I know this was a pilot, but that plus more about contraceptive, birth control, and I think we have a report later tonight about getting some help from the DEA around drug education, and maybe that would be folded into our health curriculum as well. Those are just some other things I'm thinking about. And then I think this was the report, yes, that also talked about lunch and recess hours. And I know there was a whole group that had reached out to me to do a follow-up. The last time we talked about lunch and recess was in 2017. But I thought it was interesting to note that there are seven schools that only have 15 minutes for lunch and recess. And I just, 15 minutes for lunch? Does that include travel time? And how did, does that include getting your lunch? Like, you're in line, you're getting your, I, I don't know, but it just seems like it's not enough. But I know that group that had reached out to me, and I, I didn't have it in the words of the motion, but I spoke about it on the floor, were concerned that we were doing things like silent lunches as consequences, or not allowing kids to go to recess as a consequence. And I don't see anything in here about that. And I know that sometimes, you know, the schools are looking for ways to hold students accountable for behavior. I'm just thinking that those are not the best ways. So I don't know if you have more information about those aspects of the report, or if you want to include that in the follow-up when you give us more information about how you're going to include students in the next stages with the health curriculum. The other thing, with the seven schools that only have 15 minutes for lunch and 15 minutes for recess, one of those schools is an elementary school, which it seems, not that a middle schooler can eat faster, but I think they can walk faster. I don't know. It just seems 15 minutes for, well, it's a K-8. The Bartlett was one of the 15-minute schools. But I do have concerns around that. I know we have limited time in the day. We've had this discussion before. But we also know that the social, emotional health of our students is one of the, like, foundational aspects of their ability to engage and come to school and want to learn. And if we take all that joy, our socialization out of it by a silent lunch, or this rush lunch, I mean, 15 minutes? So I just, I have concerns about that, but thank you. I don't know if you have things you want to say now?
Will be happy to follow up, Ms. Doherty. Thank you. Ms., Ms., excuse me. Ms. Crocker is also available if you wanted some responses now.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. So as I understood the motion, you were looking for the, the number of minutes for lunch and recess, which I collected from each school. I will note that there are a couple of slight deviations from that. Most of the schools that have a kindergarten have a 25-minute kindergarten lunch, because it takes a much longer time. But I provided you the, the average of all of the schools. And when you're in a, like a K-8 school or a K-4 school, the younger students will have a few extra minutes because of that, that, just the time it takes to open a milk, open, open lunch boxes, all of that stuff. In terms of the practices around, you know, silent lunches and whatnot, I, I was a principal in 2017 when a lot of that conversation happened, and we've certainly moved away from those practices. And as a, as a, we have strongly encouraged, there are times occasionally when students may have a, you know, an issue at recess, and they need to come in and settle it. It's appropriate to settle it that, at that moment. But in terms of withholding recess as a, as a punishment for behavior is not a practice that we've condoned since the time that we've worked in 2017 to move away from that practice.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to have a follow-up, follow-up questions. So if we move away from silent lunches and take away the recess as a punishment, do we still, do we still practice that at some schools, you know?
Those are not practices that we have condoned, and, and it's been a long time, we're talking about going back seven years when the conversation first began. And so I think that we have worked with all schools on coming up with other restorative ways of managing student discipline issues, and the schools have come a long way since 2017.
So no school in Lowell practiced that anymore?
Not to my knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Biden? No, I'm sorry, okay, yeah. Justella, go ahead.
Oh, I'm pretty sure I can ask the Stockloso kids too. Don't, don't you guys have lunch detention for being late or something like that?
Yeah, we were late like twice in a year after two late days. But if you get a lunch dinner, you're just waiting to have a separate class with your kids.
Mr. Rossi?
Also, I know all too well and personally at the Robinson that my own child has had lunch and/or plus, in addition to recess detention.
Mr. Superintendent, will you check on that stuff?
Certainly. I'll be happy to check on it, and we'll report back.
Any other questions or comments? This motion. Back to the 8.1, FY25, recommended budget. Mrs. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and school committee members. I'm pleased to report to you and recommend an operating budget for 2000, FY2025. I'll make a brief comment and then open it for if you have any questions. You should note, please, that we're receiving $243 million from the state in Chapter 70 funds, and that includes an increment of $14 million additional due- Chapter 70 funds, and that includes an increment of $14 million additional due to what's called the Student Opportunity Act. We anticipate the city contributing $14 million in cash, and so we have an operating budget anticipated to be $257 million. That is a very healthy sum for us to work with. Uh, we are going to be well-equipped to run schools and staff our schools and have the resources we need as much as we have in any other time, at least in my experience, with the exception of ESER time. It's ironic that despite such very healthy funding environment, we're losing ESER funding, uh, which last year accounted for $28 million of our budget. And if you, if you lose that $28 million and you supplement a little bit with 14 million more of, of Student Opportunity Act, take into account some increases in costs, and it just doesn't, even the $250 million is not sufficient. So we do need to make some cutbacks, and that is unfortunate and that is painful. Otherwise, uh, I'll remark that there was a very deliberate effort to include various voices in the budget process this year. We surveyed parents, we surveyed school leaders, we surveyed staff. We talked at central office at length. We deliberately tried to maintain alignment with our strategic plan. We tried to protect direct support to schools. In fact, schools were funded first, and they were funded to the extent that we were anxious to make the budget work, uh, because schools had, uh, as robust a funding as we could provide. We also are restructuring central office and we're sort of looking at that as an opportunity to make savings while in continuing to improve service at central office. Four principles were considered in making reductions into the budget. We eliminated any funding for facilities. $10 million of ESER funds was allocated for facilities this current year. No money is being allocated from the school department budget for facilities next year. We eliminated vacant positions. I understand our unit, union partners are here, and I want to apologize for misunderstanding on that. That actually referred to when we were working on central office reductions. We reduced first by eliminating vacant positions. No vacant, uh, teaching positions were being reduced. We reduced spending on supplies, stipends, outside contracts, et cetera. In other words, that final item where we had to reduce some positions, that was the last step that was taken. You understand, I know, that the vast majority of the school department budget is involved in positions, hiring staff. And so while we made every effort to avoid laying off staff who are currently in a position, um, that was not entirely unavoidable. The time for your input and feedback on the budget is not ended. In fact, it's a good time, uh, and I'd be happy to take comments from the school committee of any fashion, including on any additional information you would like to have prepared before Saturday's public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a number of registered speakers to the body? We have, uh, Dungo first, makes sense? Madam Clerk?
Paul Georges.
I am Paul Georges, President of the UTL. What I wanted to speak about, what I'm concerned about, and I spoke last night actually about it a little bit, was the, the lack of facility, the facilities issue should be a city issue, not a school department issue. Yet we find ourselves paying for modular classrooms. The tune last year was some $5 million, and I hear it's from the ESER money. But the ESER money could have been used to for additional supports for kids that were suffering after the pandemic, but it wasn't. It was used primarily because the city wouldn't pay for the modular classrooms. That's my understanding. And whether it comes from ESER or it comes out of Chapter 70, it still results in fewer dollars that we can use to help our neediest kids. And that should not be the responsibility solely of the school system. Now, that's last year when we had the problem with the Pataque Memorial, with the mold problem, we came back to start school, the teachers walked in, they found out how horrible the situation was in the building. Couldn't be opened, we moved a day later, but there was mitigation. It cost a significant amount of money. It's my understanding it came out of the school department budget, because the city just said it wasn't going to pay for it. And there were two other times they had to go back in with Service Pro to go over and clean it up again because there was other instances where mold was a problem again. And I wish I could say that was the only school where mold's a problem, but we all know that's not the case. My concern is we want to make sure the money that we have is used to give the kids the best education we can give them. I mean, SLPs will be speaking in a few minutes about their needs. There's five vacancies there that have been historic, trying to find people to come in and do that work. And yet much of that work is reimbursed for Medicare money that apparently goes to the city and they never see. So it can't be used apparently, or hasn't been used apparently, to hire more people and make the job doable, but you would think that would be the case, but it's not. City gets the money, I have no idea what, what we see of it, but I don't think it's very much. Maybe, uh, you know, uh, I thought Billy Jolturna would be here tonight and should be able to answer that, some of these questions. That concerns me. If there is, what is the arrangement? I know there's supposed to be a written document someplace between the city and the school department talking about who pays what. But apparently, my understanding is, it's been not approved by DESI. Whatever the document is, if it's a working, if, if that's the working document that determines, uh, who pays what, maybe, I don't know, maybe Ms. Martin knows, we were talking last night a little bit about this. Um, I don't believe it was ever brought in front of DESI for consideration. I just, I just key, I see us bleeding money all the time for, I don't want to be too harsh with the city, but the fact, the lack of maintenance over decades that I've seen since I've been here. And we keep having to fork the money over because the kids are in our, with our teachers and our, and they're not our buildings, it's the city of Lowell's buildings. We know there's a lot of infrastructure improvements that need to be done. We know that under some previous city managers, we didn't take advantage of the additional money that was coming from the state for updating vile pieces of the infrastructure in various buildings. I think that changed a few years ago. They welcome it because it means we can get some major, uh, improvements in our buildings. There was a, a report done years ago, not that many years ago, about 10, 10 years ago, the Collins Report that came from UMass Boston, where they broke down an idea about how much it would cost to get our buildings all up to snuff, all municipal buildings in Lowell. People have to understand, we don't own the buildings, the school department doesn't own any building here. So when I see us sending $700,000 for a modular classroom to go to the SEM Academy, followed by four more, that's $5 million. That's not right. It's not right, and we need to fight and make sure that if we end up with those bills, we just simply say we're not going to do it because we're taking away services for kids as a result of that. I understand everybody wants a kumbaya, everybody wants to get along, all that sort of stuff, but it's costing us and it's costing our kids, and it's costing our teachers, their ability to be able to do the best job of the kids with they, that they serve us, and that's just not fair. I'm going to keep making, I'm going to bark about this until someone starts hearing it, and hopefully the parents will start hearing and putting pressure on the proper people to make sure we're not paying for the sins of a failing infrastructure in the city of Lowell. That's about it. Thanks.
Crystal Grada.
Hi, my name is Crystal Grada. I am a speech therapist at the Cardinal O'Connell Early Learning Center, which houses five substantially separate classrooms for autistic preschool students. I currently have 67 students on my caseload, and as SLPs, there are many joys to our job, but tonight we're here to discuss a very serious concern of ours, which is the impact of high caseload on student progress. The number of SLPs in the Lowell Public School District is disproportionately low compared to the ever-growing number of students in our high-needs special education population. Tonight, given the information and data that, um, our, my fellow SLPs will be presenting, I'd like us to see if we can answer this two-part question. Are Lowell public speech therapists able to provide equitable and high-quality therapy given our high caseload? And if not, what is the path forward for our students to make success? When people think of the job of a speech therapist, working on speech sounds or stuttering is what usually comes to mind. In fact, those disabilities make up a fraction, a tiny fraction of our workload. Most of our students have limited speech or are essentially non-speaking, and therefore require alternative ways to communicate such as signs, picture symbols, and use of a high-tech speech output device like this. Our job is to help children communicate their thoughts, their ideas, their wants and needs, and the services we provide are extremely important. We not only provide therapy, we complete evaluations, we provide parent trainings, consult with the IEP team, we attend dozens of IEP meetings, we write IEPs, we're case managers, we screen students with delays, and because we have many students who use this kind of device to communicate, we are also a device programmer that has to personalize a student's voice. You think about your own communication style and your own language, your own voice, having that as a job to personalize someone's communication. I'm also an unofficial IT person when this device breaks down, so there are responsibilities for each high-need students, um, that are long and the hours we have are very limited. The Supreme Court states that each child's program must be appropriately ambitious and that therapists consider factors that affect a child's potential for growth, including consistent therapy that is appropriate in frequency and intensity in order to make progress. And the American Speech and Hearing Association's data reports that the median caseload of an SLP in Massachusetts is 38 students. In Lowell, the median is 65, 65. Do you think that is possible for us speech therapists to adhere to the laws set by the U.S. Department of Education if we have 60-plus high-need students on our caseload? And I, I do struggle with this question every day. Thank you.
Marilyn Jonas.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Jonas. I've been the speech and language pathologist at the McCullough School since 1998. As Crystal has just shared with you, our median speech caseload is about 65, which is much higher than the Massachusetts median of 38. It's also higher than the median of many northeastern states. Connecticut has a median of 33. New Jersey has a median of 40. New York, a median of 30. So Lowell Public Schools serves 85.5% high-needs students. It's my understanding that this is why the district receives millions of extra dollars in state funding. We just heard Dr. Skinner talk about the $14 million in the Student Opportunity Grant. Part of that money is because we are 85% high-needs. The Lowell Public School median SLP caseload of 65 is about two to three times higher than the typical caseloads in several districts where there are far few students who are classified as high-needs. For example, Newton is 34% high-needs, their typical caseload is 27. Lexington, 33% high-needs, typical caseload, 24. Wellesley, 27% high-needs, typical caseload, 20. You have the rest of the school districts on the handout. It's my belief that our students deserve the same access to services as the students in these other districts. In fact, I consider this an equity issue. We've also identified several other Massachusetts districts where students benefit from caseload caps. Those are Boston, that has a cap of 43. Lexington, pre-K through 5, has a cap of 24. Lexington Middle and High School has a cap of 30, and Worcester has a cap of 40. Thank you.
Lori McCarthy.
Hi, my name is Lauren McCarthy. I've been a speech pathologist in the city for about 23 years, and then I'm the mentor for the speech pathologists entering the city. So their first and second year, I mentor them. I wanted to share with you how the workload and the heavy demands of being an SLP in Lowell can be overwhelming and why many choose to leave the district. So our cohort is pretty small, we only have 31 of us, um, and we're spread throughout the city, and every year I consistently mentor two or more brand-new SLPs. So when these SLPs choose to leave, they share with me that the main reason is job dissatisfaction. It's basically an inability to possibly complete all expected work required each day due to our high caseloads. Excuse me. Just last year, we had, um, a new SLP leave to work in Boston where the children benefit from caseload caps, and another veteran SLP worked, work in, work in a neighboring suburb where the caseload is just a fraction of what she had in Lowell. When I was hired in 2001, there were approximately 16 children with autism, and they were housed in two separate classrooms with, um, children with autism. Currently, we have close to 500 children in those classrooms. Those are the classrooms with just autisms, this is including the LEAP programs, the rest of the children that we provide services throughout the regular ed, um, classrooms as well. All of these children require services and we're spread thin. As the mentor, I'm also often on SLP interview committees. At the interview, the question I know it's going to come at the end of the interview, when the candidates are asked, stated, "Do you have any questions for the panel?", and they always say, "What's your caseload?" And I sort of cringe inside because I know I have to relay this information, and I know it's not good information that they're hearing, that our caseloads are just too high. Historically, we've had, uh, we've not been able to retain many of these SLPs. Just this year, we have, um, as Mr. Georges mentioned, five vacant SLPs. So I'm not even sure if the panel knows that we have been without five all year long. We currently have 26 SLPs working for the entire city, um, so you can imagine how this has negatively impacted therapy. During IEP meetings, the parents are asked for their vision for their child. If I placed a pile of IEPs in front of all of you and you flipped to the parent vision, 80% of them would state, "I want my child to communicate better." We unfortunately are unable not to successfully meet the school with the high caseloads and frequent open positions in the city. So personally, I work and remain in Lowell. I love this city. I'm from Lowell, I attended Lowell Public Schools. My son is graduating from Lowell High just next month. My heart is for children with, have communication impairments. I think they deserve better. I'm hoping that we can find a way to market these positions a little bit better, um, offer some solutions to decrease our caseloads, retain speech pathologists, because we really make a difference in many children's lives. Thank you.
Linda McKinney.
Hi, I'm Linda McAlhinney. I have worked in Lowell Public Schools for over 20 years as an occupational therapist. I'm here representing the district's 10 OTs and our OT students. OTs work on foundational skills such as fine motor and visual motor development. Students need these skills for academic success and school participation. Without these building blocks, our students struggle to attain higher-level skills for reading, writing, and math. We also work on developing life skills with our neediest students. OTs not only provide therapy, but we complete evaluations, we write reports, provide consultation to classroom teachers and IEP teams, which include families. We We attend dozens of IEP meetings, write IEPs, and consult on assistive technology. As you heard my colleagues speak, we are equally concerned with our caselots. Currently in Lowell, the OT's average caseload is 71 students. The graph on page 5 of your packet shows caselots in surrounding communities. As you can see, the next highest number is Tinsborough with 44 students. This is concerning because our students do not have equitable access to services. Other districts in Massachusetts have set reasonable caps for caseload. Page number 6. As you can see, Boston OTs service 34 students, and Worcester OTs service 40 students. We recently learned the city of Lynn, the OTs service 20 students. The students from these districts benefit from caseload caps. Our students deserve better. We thank you. We know that you all share our commitment to providing our students with the level of service they need to be successful during critical periods of development. We appreciate being given the opportunity to share this information. We are more than happy to make ourselves available to share additional details and clarify our findings at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Hello. All right. I'm just feeling overwhelmed by listening to all of what's been going on in the district. So, good evening, Mayor Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, School Committee, and all those in the chamber, as well as the Lowellans. My name is Stacy Thompson. One of the biggest responsibilities of the school committee is the thoughtful approval of a budget. That means doing the difficult, time-consuming work of looking over a proposed budget with the carefulness of a fine-tooth comb, and more importantly, with a lens of equity. It became extremely clear to me just a few weeks ago on the city council floor that there are folks that are unaware of the inequities or lack of consistency from school to school. I share again that equity, by definition, means simply every student gets what they need. Our biggest driver must be centered on our students, our most valuable asset. As I looked through the proposed budget, there were a few things that gave me pause. We are in a year where fiscal logic and equity have to be married for the students to get what they need and deserve. Not only are we in post-pandemic recovery, the district is navigating a fiscal cliff, while the community sees taxes, costs of living, and inflation on the rise. We are at a threshold, and the choices that you all make as this elected body are critical. I'm aware that there have been a few different versions, updates, edits, or tweaks of the document that's now before us. So as I try to interpret what I see, there is one repeated theme that was very concerning, and that is the removal of systems work that engages the parents and families or the community. If reading this correctly, there's an elimination or dramatic downsizing of things like the Parent Academy or Institute, Family Resource Center, Community Schools Coordinators, Parent Liaisons, Attendance Monitors, and part-time McKinney-Vento staff, which coordinates support for our unhoused or homeless young people. Also directly impacting students are the elimination of many tutors, mental health supports, behavioral staff, and an inordinate number of social workers. And yes, I do know that the number was in response to the uprising of mental health needs. My concern is, I'm hoping that along with the budget synopsis, is a clear explanation to the community about the strategic plan, how those very vital needs, which would prove to be gaping holes, should be addressed. These supports have become crucial to our families, so what is the plan as to how the relationships that have been built and established continue with these cuts? In order to value our multilayered students, these connections to families, to our community, our paramount to student success. In looking further at these changes, one other thing stood out. Many of these cuts exist under responsibilities that fell or fall under the Office of Assistant Superintendent of Equity or Chief Equity Office. In 2020, my former colleagues and current school committee members Connie Martin and Jackie Doherty brought to the floor a motion of racism as a public health crisis, which passed and became something, as a portion of equity, that the district embraced and became committed to. Years later, the city follows suit and also hired a DEI chief. So the question rises, do we still believe that, or is the crisis now over? I believe if you listen to our students, they will tell you that that is not the case. So whether you call the report Safe in Welcoming Schools, or Discrimination, Racism, and Bullying Dashboard, the issues are still here, and that means the diversity office needs to be too. I get, for a variety of reasons, people don't understand equity, whether that be choice, being uneducated about it, a feeling of unease, or not wanting change to happen. However, having a person tasked with looking at systems, doing the hard work of challenging them when inequities are present, is not optional unless folks have chosen not to prioritize it. What seems to be uplifted in importance, however, are two new Assistant Superintendent positions, one for Student Support Services and another for School Leadership, at nearly $200,000 each, which means heavy loading at central office while the students are taking direct cuts to support. Meanwhile, I don't even know if this budget is presented to community members in a variety of languages, and the community budget forms listed on the district website are from 2023. Finally, there was an internal audit conducted at the district with the intention of providing guidance on how and what would need to be properly done to move this district forward in terms of restructuring the organization. While I was interviewed for that report, I have yet to see it released to the taxpayers or to our community members. The findings made by these experts would be used to shape the organizational chart, and therefore, the flow of the organization. Additionally, they would prove integral to how positions would look or not look in the budget. It's challenging to ask the public to weigh in in an authentic way without seeing the thoughts shared by these experts about how to move the organization that is Lowell Public Schools forward. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers.
Phil Boddy. We do have a public hearing on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. See you Saturday at 10 o'clock, Ms. Doherty.
If we could hold our comments till Saturday. I know we have another group of students waiting to report, and I was supposed to move that forward. It's just getting late. I think we do have Saturday, and we just got some of this information, the updated information. I haven't really had a chance to fully digest it.
Saturday it is. 8.2 Strategic Goal Portrait of a Graduate in Response by Motion by Ms. Doherty, March 20, 2024, Regarding the Portrait of a Graduate. Ms. Doherty.
I believe the students are here to present. Thank you.
They have him in front of them.
So, Mr. Mayor, School Committee members, this presentation will be led by Patty Adams, one of our teachers at Lowell High, and then the two students who went on one of our learning excursions will also share their experience.
Thank you. I am Dr. Patricia Adams. I'm a science teacher at Lowell High School. I've actually been teaching in Lowell for 25 years. Today, I'm excited to be here to present an update on the work that has been happening with regard to Portrait of a Graduate, often referred to as POG. This is our fourth year engaging in Portrait of a Graduate work at Lowell High School. The Portrait of a Graduate is a reimagining of the high school experience and redefinition of the competencies and skills students should have as they graduate. With Lowell Public Schools, we believe students should graduate prepared to engage and lead others to make positive change toward creating a more equitable world. As part of this work, at Lowell Public Schools, we have identified six competency areas or domains that we believe all students should hold as they graduate from high school. Our domain areas are leadership, heart, skill, network, spirit, and mind. And I'm just going to take a second and multitask to go to that slide for you. Okay. So that is on Slide 3. Those are the domains that have been developed at the high school. At the end of 2022 and 2023 school year, a plan was created to focus our Portrait of a Graduate work around three priority areas, which are on Slide 4. Reimagining instruction, building positive relationships, and transforming systems. While we are proud of the master schedule work we have done in pursuit of transforming systems and the culturally responsive training that has taken place in an effort to support building positive relationships across the building, today we are here to report on our work with regard to reimagining instruction. Specifically, we are here to share how this work relates to the Portrait of a Graduate deliverables that were presented to the school committee for the 23-24 school year. Last year, Lowell High committed to ensuring that students were actively interacting with the Portrait of a Graduate domains in their academic coursework. At each grade level, we set out to create a student artifact that would allow students to demonstrate their growth with regard to at least two domain areas. We are also committed to the developing and implementing rubrics aligned with the POG domains. In Slides 5 to 7, that will outline the progress in the district goals, as well as Slide 19. To meet these deliverables this year, all courses across Lowell High School have worked to incorporate POG domains into both curriculum maps and lesson plans. Additionally, rubrics were created for each domain in the 2022-23 school year, and these have been incorporated into classroom instruction this year. Within the freshman seminar course, our freshmen have started their work on creating a freshman finale assignment. This is a grade-level artifact that documents their progress with regard to the domain areas of network and spirit. In addition to the implementation of the freshman finale, we are working to define artifacts for grades 10, 11, and 12, with the timeline of implementing these artifacts on a yearly basis as the class of 2027 moves through Lowell High School. Through the Bar Foundation and the Next Generation Learning Challenges and GLC, our team has been able to participate in several innovative school learning excursions this year. These experiences are designed to give us the opportunity to see other high schools that are in the midst of transforming their school environment and develop strategies that we can bring back to our district. Students are also included as part of this learning team, and their participation has proven invaluable in helping us understand the importance and value of student voice as we work to transform their learning experience with Lowell Public Schools. So I am now pleased to turn over the presentation to two of our amazing students, Catherine and Jessella. Elevating student voice was a theme that came out of each conference we attended, and while our presentation materials reflect the initial steps we have taken at Lowell High School and the Career Academy to bring this learning back to our buildings, we know this is just a start. Our students have so much knowledge to share with us about their school experience, and the largest learning that has come out of recent conference work is to prioritize finding additional ways to elevate their voices in the decision-making that is taking place within our buildings.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. How do I skip it? Okay. Yep, hi, everyone. You guys know me. I'm Jessella. So we're going to share our findings that we did for the trips for the Portrait of a Graduate. First, we're starting with our Springfield, Mass. trip. Basically, our learning focuses for this were to experience a student summit at Springfield, create a provocation statement, and basically, obviously, visit the school in Springfield to see what things that we could change about Lowell High School and take from them. So some of our key takeaways is that we did create that provocation statement that I'll read to you shortly, and we also hosted two of our own mini-student summits at Lowell High School, where we gathered intel on our students and their opinions about things that the school needs to change, and we plan to have a larger one soon. That's in the works. It also reinforced the need for a master schedule change, which allows increased collaboration, creativity, and student voice within the classroom. This is a big thing because I know a lot of our students don't have the time to reflect and really get creative or want to go to school when they have the coursework of seven classes, which includes seven pieces of homework every single day, while also still having to learn and take tests and study for those seven classes every day. Here's our provocation statement. If we are a community that values mind and network, and students are saying they need more chances to be engaged, communicate, collaborate, and show their creativity and reflect on their learning, then we need to change and elevate teacher instructional practices to support student voice, engagement, and critical thinking. And that was from our Springfield. So now we're going to talk about our Manchester learning excursion that went from March 26 to March 28. So our learning focus from that was more substance-based, as we want to experience their senior story, which is kind of what we're mimicking with the freshman finale. And we wanted to learn their successes and the failures, and how we can apply it to our trajectory, and also how we can culminate the Portrait of a Graduate into the artifacts of the freshman finale. So some key takeaways from that was the stress of more professional development, which is needed to incorporate the Portrait of a Graduate. This is meaningful work. My colleagues have spent a lot of time creating the Portrait of a Graduate, and the whole idea of it is actually really important and makes our students better citizens. But for that to be understood by our students, it first needs to be understood by our staff, because if our staff don't believe in this mission, then our students won't either. That's why professional development really needs to be stressed, because I want our teachers to see the importance of this so our students can too, because I know it's important, but I've been on these trips, so the rest of our students haven't. And something I mentioned earlier, students require time to reflect and engage on their learning. Like I said, seven classes with homework for each one, it's kind of like, I'm just trying to get this A. I'm not really reflecting on what I need to do, more of, I need to get this class done, I need to go here, I need to go there. So yeah, students require time to have meaningful learning, as they need time to sit back and reflect, and I think that's what we're doing with the freshman finale as we collect artifacts from our high school journey. And lastly, it's the importance of elevating student voice and ensuring that all voices are included. People like me and Catherine, we're kind of nerds, and we're at the top of our school, you know? And I think that a lot of the times, and something that I saw in Manchester, was that these top students are always chosen for the same things over and over again, to be the representation of student voice, and the average student gets lost, and our Lowell high-need students get lost because we're the ones representing them. I don't know what my ELL colleagues go through, I don't know what my lower-grade colleagues go through, but here I am, representing all of them, all 3,000 students here at the school committee today. But now I'm going to turn it over to Catherine to talk more about our freshman seminar, and I hope you guys are interested in, because this is important work.
Okay, I'm Catherine Belly. I am a freshman at Lowell High School, and I'm going to talk about Manchester right now. So, I heard beautiful senior stories that were a reflection of the students focusing on who they are, not just what they learned in the classroom. I had an opportunity to present our team's findings to a larger audience of my peers, staff, district leaders, and mentors. Also, during our visit to Vermont, through the small school settings, the focus was on community engagement and more student voice. Immediately upon return from Connecticut, through our freshman finale pilot, we made changes to our upcoming rollout based on my voice and those of my peers. Our freshman finale is the start of our student portfolio, which will include our first reflective piece on spirit and network domains, which also included student voice. With our voice, we will help shape the future of our seminar class curriculum. We are also very excited to start collaborating with our community partners on our educational journey. Thank you.
I just want to say, great job by the students. They also represented us very well in Manchester. I thought all the other schools were impressed. Spoken not objectively, I know. But I think we see there's a lot of great work going on at the high school, and this idea of really getting students' input is so important, and I think we need to continue to learn and grow with that as the adults. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. 8.4, Response to Motion by Mr. Lay, April 17, 2024, Regarding Kamehga history. Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Superintendent Skinner and Mr. Fierro for responding, and also Mr. Desmond. I want to thank Mr. Fierro for calling me and updating me about this program. I'm still waiting for the director of the department head of the history to contact me, and if I don't hear from him soon, I probably have to contact him and make the arrangement, because I'm so excited that he agreed to have me meet with the teacher, and I can learn more about the history. It is personal for me that... that I'm so proud that Lowell not only offered the Kamehga language but also the Kamehga history, probably the only one of the few in the world outside Cambodia that do that. So I really appreciate it, and I am very excited to, looking forward for the opportunity to meet the teacher. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lay. Any other comments? 8.5, response to motion by Mr. Rossi and myself, April 3, 2024, regarding drug prevention. Mr. Rossi?
Thank you for the information. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Desmond. Very detailed, and I think we're in good hands in this situation. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I just was wondering if we can look at incorporating this into the health curriculum, if there's any thoughts around that.
Superintendent?
Ms. Desmond?
Yes, we would like to do that. I think what we are doing or trying to do this year is roll out that pilot, make sure it's aligned to the state's standards, make sure that we have, you know, the teaching personnel in place, and I think we're at that point where now we can start to really look at, you know, what it is that the kids experienced, what the teacher's experience has been around health curriculum, and then look at developing curriculum guides, which is what we do in my office on all of our content area. But we always do it based on, you know, teacher feedback and, you know, what worked, what didn't work, when is a good time to implement these concepts throughout the year, and then go back and tweak it as we go along. So I think, you know, we're really pulling together the best pieces of all of these resources and pulling that task force together to analyze all of the information that we have to develop a really well-thought-out curriculum map for next year and future years. And then there's also, you know, experts here that would be great to be able to come into classes and perhaps speak to our young students, our young adults, and so that is something else we want to be considering as well here.
I wonder if I could just follow up. So when you're at a state that's more involved, when you've got some of those pieces put together, maybe circle back with us with an update, and then we could maybe refer to curriculum if that was appropriate. But I think it's all very important and interesting. Thank you.
Comments? No? Thank you. Six, graduations and dropout rate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee members, you have a report in your packet. I believe we provide this for you annually. The information was just released on the last Friday. It was, the embargo on this information was lifted, and so we provided it to you at the soonest possible date. You have the report in your packet, and we'll be happy to take questions if you have any.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I want to say we have made some progress with some of our groups. You know, the African-American Black students are 2.5% increase. Latino students also saw some gains. I think we saw some improvements in special ed students. But I think what most jumps out at me, and that's on page two, was that little chart looking at how we compare with the other districts that are similar to us. And I think that's where we see the rubber really hits the road, because everybody has experienced loss in learning, and graduation rates and dropout rates have increased from the pandemic. But we used to be, in 2019, Lowell was number five of all those similar districts, and we have moved down to, well, in 2022, we moved to position number 12, and then we saw a little bit of a tick up. Last year, we were at number 11, and not that far away from Lawrence, which we had always been well ahead when looking. So I think we've got some real issues that we need to be dealing with at the high school, and I'd be especially interested as we go through the budget process to see what the plan is for doing a better job of graduating our students and reducing our dropout rates. I also would like to be reminded, so 2020 was when the pandemic hit, right? But that was like in March. So those students who graduated in 2020, we were still pretty good at that point, right? Was MCAS waived as a graduation requirement in 2020?
Yes.
Okay, so MCAS was, you didn't have to pass MCAS in 2020, 2021, or 2022, correct? Last year was the first year it was a graduation requirement again?
I believe that's true, yes.
So I mean, people will say that had a huge difference, right? You didn't have to pass MCAS to graduate because of all the other conditions that were going on in the world. But again, you look at how our sister cities did, and you say, we're not behind the eight ball. We're not doing well enough. And I think we need to be held accountable for that and be looking at some really strategic moves, what's working, what isn't working, and certainly not to be removing programs or services that are helping us to close those gaps. But that's just what jumped out. It's a lot of data. I appreciate the timeliness of it.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. When I introduced the report, I explained it but didn't analyze it, and I left that for you. If I were to give an analysis, it would be just what you said, I believe. I think you're absolutely right. I think we have a lot of work to do. I refer to the same chart that you did, and also the one above it that gives the 2023 cohort is just poor. It's not sufficient.
I just thought of one more thing I'd like to add, and I know we're going to be discussing the budget Saturday, but as those of us who have been on the committee for a while know, with the last administration, we moved to this new kind of budgeting that every school had more control over their numbers, and it was supposed to be a joint effort from each school community with the parents involved through the school-side councils, which I thought was a great idea on the face of it, if you actually have active, engaged parents at every school, which I don't know if we do or not. I'm not saying that. But the bottom line, we still make the decisions. So I just want to, like, put that red flag out there. I am going to be looking very closely at what the high school is recommending they do for their budget, because, as I said, this information to go from fifth place, we've always been ahead of some of these sister cities, to now be looking at number 11, number 12, when we're all facing the same challenges, we're all looking at the results of the pandemic, the poverty, the homelessness, the language issues. We can't use those as excuses to say we're doing well enough, because we're not. So I just want to remind my colleagues, we have fair student funding, but the bottom line on these budget decisions is with us. Thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. This report was very detailed. It gave me a lot of insight. One of the reasons I ran for the school committee seat...
One of the reasons I ran for this school committee seat was because of the graduation rate. And the graduation rate, to me, is very alarming. It's alarming because when I see 75% of the students at Lowell High School graduate, it means the 25% don't graduate. It means that's a dropout rate. What are we doing to go ahead and address the dropout rate? Because if you look at Table four on page seven, yep, page seven, as well as page nine, you're looking at Hispanic dropout rate of 18%, white dropout rate of 16%, and unfortunately, it's only going up. We're looking at dropout rate on page seven. Last year was only 19, this year was 20, but the previous year was 16. How are we addressing the dropout rate? Because if I can't graduate students of Lowell, then I'm serving them an injustice, and that's the most important thing that I can do here on this school committee, is graduate kids and not see them drop out and hope, hope that they'll work at Target or Walmart. There's much more that we can go ahead and do for our students than give them, 25% of them to drop out. It's very alarming, and I don't want to put it on the administration, but I have to put it on someone, because this is my city that I've lived in all of my life, and I don't know that I'm ever leaving. And I want to see my city progress, and with these dropout rates, this is extremely alarming. And I could just sit here and flip pages and just keep talking about the same thing. So I appreciate your work. I appreciate everything that you do. I know we have a new superintendent, and I have all the trust in that we can move this school system forward. But I just really would love to hear a plan on how we're going to address this very big problem.
I think the points brought up by Ms. Doherty and Mr. Bahu are very valid. The report in front of us could talk a lot about it. If you want to consider going to a subcommittee for some back and forth, maybe some plans for the future, does that make sense?
If I may, it's just inviting the high school leadership to come to that meeting.
All right, Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. 8.7, KPI report, quarter three. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, if you recall, it was suggested previously that when we had this KPI report available to you, that we move it to a subcommittee. If that's still your wish, then I'm happy to make that recommendation.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, send it to which one, Mr. Superintendent, you recommend? Curriculum?
It'd be school improvement, I believe. Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Dar Rossi. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. 8.8, school...
Excuse me?
Yes, Superintendent.
School committee members, if I may point out about this KPI report, it's grown and grown and grown, partly because of your great interest in it, and you have complemented the work that goes into producing this report, which is, I think it is very valid that you have this data. In recent times in particular, we've been asked to include information, for example, for iReady for all the grade levels. We've been asked to provide the technology tickets, the repair tickets, for all repairs for all schools, and we've been asked to provide the work orders for, you know, repairs for schools, for all work orders for all schools, and so on. So you now have what I believe is an 86, 85-page report. As you go to subcommittee with the report, I'd love to prompt you to consider, if you want us to continue to provide you a report of just this length each quarter, we will do so. I think it's worth considering. It may be that we can summarize the information in a useful way for you. Thank you.
And I just have one request. I just have one request on this KPI report. Much of the report stated to refer back to the first quarter's report. I didn't come on to the school committee until after the first quarter report was created. So if someone could kindly have that mailed to me, or next time I'm in, give it to me, so I can do that comparison.
Superintendent?
Certainly. We'll do that. Mr. Bahu?
8.8, school committee member, school visit policy. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this was an item of discussion for some school committee members regarding visits to schools in central office. I was requested to put this on here, I believe with the intention of the school committee moving it to a subcommittee meeting where you could consider this policy and potentially make revisions to it.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. We did talk about moving it to the policy subcommittee, but I had a couple of questions from my colleagues. Before we do that, Ms. Phillips had looked into having the Mass Association of School Committees assist us in reviewing some of our policies. That initially started from a motion Ms. Dar Rossi had, that we look at our policies. But the policies are like 900 pages, right? The policy book is that big. I was not interested in starting at A. I was more interested in, like Ms. Dar Rossi, you had a motion to look at policy. Was it a certain policy that you wanted to look at? And certainly, this could be one of the first ones we look at, reviewing in order to see. I think what we're trying to do is find, with this policy regarding school committee visits and interaction with its central office and things like that, from my perspective, we're trying to find a balance, right? Because we need to know information in order to do our job, and the superintendent and all the staff that are in our schools need to do their work of educating our students. So finding a balance between our rights without imposing on the education process that's happening. I would like guidance from MAS-C about how do other districts do it, what's their recommendation of best practices around policy. You had specific policies you wanted looked at, so I'm thinking, is everyone in favor of doing that, getting MAS-C involved, scheduling a policy subcommittee? Certainly, we could poll everyone to try to do it on a night when everyone can make it, or we can just report back out to you what MAS-C says, because whatever we do in a subcommittee, it has no teeth until we get the support of the full committee. So I just wanted some guidance from my colleagues, if that's how you want to proceed with. We definitely will start with this one, because this we already discussed, sending it to the policy subcommittee. I'd like to include MAS-C, and then I'd like some feedback of what other policies you want us to tackle, not alphabetical. It's too many pages.
My original...
Ms. Dar Rossi?
Thank you. Sorry. My original policy stemmed from the BHBK report, where it cited that the policies were not clear enough, or there was essentially too much leeway, that it wasn't worded strongly enough to say this is exactly the way. And it seemed like there were a lot of, I mean, we spend a lot of taxpayer money on that, on that report, on that investigation, and so forth. So I wanted to start to put some policies in place so that the wording was clear and more concise as to what they referenced in that BHBK report, so it doesn't go for naught.
So motion response on the floor is school committee member, school visit policy. We're going to do that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there's a lot of different policy considerations here. One, just general comment is, I recommend the committee consider using MAS-C to revise all our policies, because, you know, BHBK report, I think Ms. Dar Rossi is correct, and that that is highest priority. That's our hiring policy, and there were inconsistencies found. We should look at that. But I don't think we should wait till we have a problem in some other area to decide to update our policy in that area. Some of our policies go back to 1975. I think it's high time we brought in MAS-C and had them help us to revise our policies. We can give them a priority order. We can say, let's start with school visitations, or let's start with hiring. The hiring policy, I think, would require outside help for sure. The school visitation policy, this committee is, I think, well-equipped to sit and meet and decide what you want to do with the visitation policy by yourselves.
It should take 10 minutes to figure it out. This one here.
So as the chair of policy, I would ask that we pull for a policy subcommittee meeting...
For this particular response?
To this one, and add, identify from the BHBK report some other agenda items, and start with a few that way, and invite MAS-C to...
So as the chair, you can call a subcommittee on whatever subject you'd like. So you want to, you want to just call a subcommittee on the policies?
Yes, we're going to call it. But we typically have asked for, right? We start doing that. Ms. Martin wants to speak.
Ms. Martin? I was just going to say, just in terms of protocol, the school committee does have a standing policy in place that no subcommittee can be called unless it's voted on by the full committee. So you can't just call one. Like, we have to have a vote to do it and what we're going to talk about.
We're all here, right? Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree.
By Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mia Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dar Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Approved.
Matt Clark, you're also with the subject matter of the subcommittee?
It's, you're going to send this to MAS-C with, to see if MAS... You're going to have a sub, policy subcommittee, invite MAS-C?
Yes.
And also include some different issues from the BHBK report?
Yes.
Are you going to identify the...
I will identify the top three. I can work with the superintendent to do that.
Okay.
But we'll start with those as the priority. But I think superintendent's correct, some of these policies go way back and need to be looked at. But these are just the immediate ones to begin with. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
I guess, seeing that we're on the topic of subcommittees, it's probably important that we, maybe, let's have a vote on whether we would like to have a subcommittee on the public works document that was...
So as, as about, starting the agenda for tonight, so I don't know if we can go there or not?
Oh.
Yeah, not yet.
It's not, oh, it's on the, oh, I didn't see it. Okay. Oh, it's not?
Right.
Okay. Another time.
Right.
Okay, great. Move on.
The motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, eight point one through eight point eight, as reports of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Bahu. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes, approved. Eight point nine, home education. The motion to approve, Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Nine, new business. Nine point one, budget transfer, the motion to approve the budget transfer of $43,000. A motion to approve by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Rossi, no, seconded by Mr. Lay. Mr. Rossi, have a question?
I just want to know why it's being taken out of the social workers' account, especially, I just received a letter today that a social worker is going out for the rest of the year, and there are not enough social workers, and I just, I, I don't understand why it's coming out of the social worker account when we're already, looks like we're going to lose a significant amount, and I've already lost a significant amount without a plan in place for students.
Any other questions, comments? Superintendent?
Mr. Mayor, were you offering me an opportunity for comments or questions?
Yes, please.
I don't have any questions. I'm happy to respond to a question. Mr. Rossi, is there a specific question you'd like information on?
I just want to know why it's, this transfer is coming out of the social workers' account for the Alice training, when Alice training, I mean, usually makes people, makes most students want social workers, but never mind that. The social workers are already in deficit. There's, in this, in the city, I just got a letter today stating, you know, that the special ed social worker that my son works with, that she's going out, and they're working with the UTL for a better idea overall, so I just want to know why it's coming out of that fund.
Thank you.
Can it come out of any other fund?
Thank you. It's a great question. So my understanding is that at this time of year in particular, running closer to the end of the fiscal year, that once funds are sought for an expenditure, that we will go to an item that we were not likely to spend out. In other words, that, to me, I don't have Ms. Turner with us tonight, I'm not sure where that originated from, but it looks like that is a .5 social worker position somewhere. Why is that .5 position not being filled and spending that funds, I don't know, but it's been identified as an area that's not likely to be spent this fiscal year and could be better used for the training that's being sought. If you'd like to delay on it, I'll be happy to seek further information before we make the transfer. Otherwise, if you approve it, we'll move forward.
Why don't we take a roll call, see what happens? Ma'am clerk?
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Mr. Rossi?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Five yeas, two nays.
Nine point two, approval to accept and expend grant. The motion to approve, accept, and expend the allocated FY '24 awards, by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Nine point three, vote to accept the donation of $20,000 from the Bill Marcus Foundation Incorporated. The motion to accept the donation from Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Seven yeas.
Nine point four, vote to accept donations for Civics Day Student Activities Account. The motion to accept by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Ten, convention conference request. Ten point one, overnight request Lowell High School Poetry Club to Boston, Mass. The motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Seven yeas.
Eleven, communications. We have two. Eleven point one, 2024 Abbotsey Adult Education Center graduation. Eleven point two, special education staff caseload equity and funding.